The Town of Plainville, established in 1721 at the geographical center of Connecticut.
We're going to begin our regular town council meeting. Tonight is Monday, August 16th, 2021, at 7:00 PM. I'll ask you all to stand for the pledge and Councilman Nazzo will lead us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands on one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. Tonight's a special night. We are here at the beginning of our meeting to award some presentations to some of our fire department members. Our Councilman Nazzo is going to take over the honors. He is a liaison to the fire department and he is going to be, he's going to be leading the charge here, I guess. Is that a good way to put that, Jesse? You're all set. Okay. So we're gonna, we're gonna take this and turn it over to Councilman Nazzo and he will carry on.
Good evening, everyone. Sorry if those, got a look at my back. I'll see if I can spin this around this way. So tonight, we're going to do a couple of things. We're going to start with the 2021 firefighter service awards. We have a few people to recognize. When I call you, please come up. Peter Montana, five years. Ronald Diver, five years. There's the fire marshal you were just looking for. Dennis Nguyen, 15 years. Michael Dietrich, 20 years. Michael Dietrich? Mark Cahill, 30 years. William Gammon, 35 years. Jeffrey Johnson, 40 years. Robert O'Day, 51 years. The next item on our agenda for years of service is for firefighters with 40-plus years of service, they'll be receiving, let me get it. So for 40 years of service, each of you will be receiving one of these chairs. Bob, I believe we got you last, the year before last, I believe on that. So when I call you, please come up because we'd like to have you gather for a picture. So with 40-plus years, Douglas Doughty. No. David Mazerick. Richard Nichols. Once again, Robert O'Day. Joseph Silvario. And one of my oldest and closest friends, Edgar Winn Coop. Gentlemen, thank you very much. For our last presentation for the fire department this evening, I'd like to have current chief Thomas Machini join me at the podium. Where is he? Not you. So in honor of Kevin Tonner, former chief Kevin Tonner's end of his term as chief, with the Plainville Town Council, we'll be presenting you with a chair. We'd like to have you come up so we can shake your hand, say thank you for your eight years of service and leadership.
Chief, on behalf of the fire department, the men and women of the department, I'd like to thank you for your eight years of being our chief and leading this town to a safe place. We'd like to give you your watch.
Hey, Matt. Matt? Congratulations, everyone. Thank you for your service.
Thanks, Councilman Nazzo, for taking care of that. And again, congratulations to all our longtime service members of the Plainville Fire Department. And of course, thanks to all of the Plainville Fire Department. Your volunteerism goes above and beyond in a very dangerous job. And we could never pay you for what your value is, but we appreciate you and we want to thank you for everything that you've given to the Town of Plainville. So many thanks to everybody for what you do. We appreciate it. We're going to go a little bit off agenda at this moment in time. Typically, our public comments section comes later in our agenda, but I have been asked to put a bit of time right now to a police officer. I'm not sure who the speaker is going to be, but somebody is, would like to come to the podium and make a statement. So if you would do so, we'd appreciate it. Turn on your mic. Yep, perfect.
Top mic. Okay, thank you. Ladies and gentlemen of Plainville Town Council, good evening. I'm Sergeant Rich Markey with your department. I've been here for 26 years and have served as patrol officer and a first-line supervisor. Currently, my duties are administrative in nature and I work closely with our command staff to oversee various projects within our department. But tonight, I'm here to speak on behalf of our Plainville Police Union. Our agency has been without a chief for 10 months and appointing a chief is overdue. Managing the daily operations of our police department is not an easy assignment. But fortunately for us, Lieutenant Eric Peterson has stepped into this role and has been navigating our department through what many of us consider the most challenging time for our agency and law enforcement in general. When we take a moment to consider the police accountability legislation, COVID pandemic, and the deaths of two of our beloved members of our department, this is not a time to waver with uncertainty in leadership. Thankfully for us and the town, citizens in our department, Lieutenant Eric Peterson has been our leader. He has shown all of us that he can lead with the best interests of the citizens and police officers in mind. And he does so with integrity, fairness, and vision that we've all come to expect from our previous administration. To keep this brief and get right to our point, we respectfully ask the council to appoint Lieutenant Peterson as our next chief of police. He has the loyalty, overwhelming support, respect of the employees and citizens of Plainville. He has earned that appointment and is no doubt what is best for our community. The union thanks you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Sergeant Markey. Thank you for those words. We are going to move into the rest of our agenda at this point. We certainly welcome all of you to stay because it's fascinating. However, if you have some other things you need to do for the rest of the evening, we're going to take a little bit of a moment break here and you can carry on. So, thank you again. Okay, so we're going to resume our regular agenda items right now. We do not have a public hearing. I will ask for approval of the minutes of our previous meeting. Please may I have a motion?
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Motion to approve the minutes of July 19th, 2021, regular meeting, July 26th, 27th, 29th, and August 3rd, 2021, special meetings.
Second motion, Madam Chair.
I have a motion in a second. Are there any corrections or additions to those minutes? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thanks. Now, to some reports, we have one item under here. Robert, are you gonna, about the Main Street Foundation proclamation, will you give us a little information on that, please? I know it's yours.
Let me pull it up here. The Main Street Community Foundation, Inc., is celebrating their 25th anniversary. They're actually having a program tomorrow, early evening, that I'll be attending as well as you, Chairperson Puglisi. And we've put a proclamation together for them. I don't know if you want to practice it tonight and read it tonight because you'll probably be reading it tomorrow on behalf of the, on behalf of the presentation.
I can certainly do that. I just have to find it here in my.
I can give you a hard copy.
Okay, I'm good with that. Do you have one?
I do. Now, I know Deb is normally the proclamation reader, but.
Okay, so I haven't looked at this yet, but I'll try to get through it. Proclamation for the Main Street Community Foundation, Inc., 25-year anniversary. Whereas, Main Street Community Foundation, Inc., is a public charity committed to partnering with individuals, families, and businesses who wish to build permanent charitable connections now and for generations to come to support and better the communities of Bristol, Burlington, Plainville, Plymouth, Southington, and Woolcott. And whereas, their mission is to be widely recognized as the comprehensive center for leadership and philanthropy in the communities through gift-giving, prudent stewardship of assets, effective grant-making, and community leadership. And whereas, since its establishment in 1995, Main Street Community Foundation has awarded grants and scholarships totaling more than $20 million and is now one of the leading grant-makers in the region. And whereas, over the past 25 years, the Town of Plainville and community organizations have received over $500,000 in grants and scholarships. And whereas, through 2020 was the 25th anniversary of the Community Foundation, a celebration of this important milestone was not possible due to the COVID pandemic. And whereas, during their anniversary year, the Main Street Community Foundation staff, along with their volunteer members of the distribution committee, worked tirelessly during that difficult time to ensure that awards were made. Now, therefore, we, the Plainville Town Council and Town Manager, do hereby extend our thanks for your generosity and believe that together, we can build a better future and offer our congratulations on 25 years of community service and best wishes for decades of continued success. Dated the 17th day of August, 2021, Plainville Town Manager, Robert E. Lee, and the Plainville Town Council, myself, Deborah Tompkins, Vice Chairwoman, Jesse Nazzo, Rosemary Moranti, Jacob Rocco, David Underwood, Christopher Wazarka, were signed. So, congratulations to them. That's a nice milestone. A year later, we're recognizing it, but this hap, this is happening, right?
Everything got delayed.
This is happening. Thank you. Okay. All right. Do we have any other announcements and reports to make?
Madam Chairman.
Go ahead.
This year is the 20th anniversary of 9/11. I don't know if anybody's aware of that. 20 years ago, we were attacked. Men, women, and children perished in the biggest attack on our country. A little while ago, I think about a month ago, Dave Dudak, the commander of VFW, came to me and said, "Dave, what are we doing for the 20th year anniversary?" I said, "I have no idea. Let me talk to the Town Manager." We got together with Robert and we decided to put together a memorial service, which will be held on 9/11 at 8:30 in the morning at the Veterans Park on Maple and Whiting Street. The Reverend Jim Karen, pastor of Faith Bible, also chaplain of the fire department, will be our guest speaker. There will be an honor guard between the police, fire, VFW, and Knights of Columbus. And there'll be a gun salute with taps. We don't expect it to last any more than a half an hour, but we invite the public and the council to attend this service on 9/11. Again, 8:30 in the morning, and there will be an honor guard, and the Reverend Jim Karen will be speaking.
Thank you, Dave. Thanks for being part of the organization of this. It's certainly a milestone and remembering that day brings lots of thoughts to everybody's mind. We appreciate you did that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other reports or announcements that we'd like to make tonight?
Madam Chair.
Rosemary.
Okay. Last week, I attended the August meeting of the Conservation Commission. And just two highlights. There was a presentation on the Pecquabic River watershed-based plan and how Plainville could possibly fit into this. And just wanted to report too, that the Conservation Commission members were very pleased when Garrett and I were telling them about the proposed purchase of the valley water property near adjacent to Crescent Lake. They're obviously always happy to hear about open space being acquired by the town.
That's it for you?
That's it.
Okay.
The other groups don't meet until September.
All right. Okay, thank you for that. If there are no other reports tonight, we, I don't believe we have any appointments and resignations that I'm aware of. There was none in our packet. Does anybody have anything that was not listed that you want to take care of? No? Okay. Moving along. Board of Education, we're not going to have a report tonight. They're on hiatus for the summer. So Robert, it's your turn again.
Thank you. I have several items, the first of which is the water pollution control phosphorus removal project update. The Town of Plainville began discussing a phosphorus removal project for the wastewater treatment plant in, believe it or not, 2014. This was in response to an anticipated new permit requirement to reduce total phosphorus release into the Pecquabic River. After several years of planning and securing state grants to pay for a portion, the project was approved at referendum in January 2019. Work began the following summer. The improvements were designed by Tyon Bond and the construction was performed by Daniel O'Connell, sons and sons of Holyoke, Massachusetts. Joe Aloso, Superintendent of the wastewater treatment plant, is here this evening to give a presentation of the project that was recently completed at the wastewater facility on Cronk Road. So with your permission, Joe, you're up.
Thanks. Good evening, everyone.
Hi, Joe.
Yeah, you can either sit there at the podium, one or the other.
Can I use this?
Sure.
I can't see that firefighter all the way down there. So what you see here is the, is the treatment plant before any upgrade was done this time. You'll notice in the background to the left corner, that's the Pecquabic River, heads out to the Farmington River, and eventually out to Long Island. To the left of that would be the end of the runway for Robertson Airport. On the bottom left is Cronk Road coming into the treatment plant. And the four circular tanks, that was an upgrade you did in 2009. And the rest of the buildings that you see, they were previous updates that were done in 1977 and 1950, when it was originally built. And just lastly, on the top towards the right, you're going to see a bare pot across there. There's nothing on it. Looks like a little bit of a playground field thing, and that's what we're going to be talking about tonight. So excavation for the project, there was pretty deep. We had to build million-gallon holding tanks because the way this system works, it needs a constant flow, which our treatment plant doesn't do. So we had to sort of make our treatment plant a different type of treatment plant so that we'd be able to remove phosphorus. And there was, and being so close to Pecquabic River, we spent a lot of time dewatering the river because the river naturally would come up wherever we dug. There was an awful lot of steel and an awful lot of concrete that you'll see that was put into this project. Again, there's concrete through the, through the flooring, through all the walls. You might get a sense of how deep it is if you look at the people that are working on the scaffolding. Part of the project, and I know that we've talked about this over the past 10 years, is our rotating drum thicken of our RDT. It's been needing to be replaced. It hasn't been that reliable. It's certainly not a day-to-day piece of equipment that we can rely on. So we encompassed this into the project, and by doing so, we were able to apply our grant money towards it. So on average, the grant money for this project was 46, was 42%. So that was a straight grant. We don't have to pay any of that back. So we were fortunate enough to get this part of the project done as part of the overall upgrade, and we got it for 42% off. We then took an old lime silo room that was used back in the 70s. I think it was a 70s upgrade. It used to be a lime silo in here, and they would mix lime with sludge to dispose of it. You'll notice the four pillars on the floor. You're going to see them in the next slide also. So this is the new RDT, and you can see the two far pillars on the bottom that were reused. This, this RDT handles almost twice as much flow as the previous RDT. It certainly handles what we produce now and what we anticipate producing in the future. So this should last us for quite a while. That building there is the new phosphorus removal building. The white concrete in the front is going to be chemical mixing tanks. The concrete, low concrete on the left-hand side, that's the odor control system, which, as a side note, the town rebuilt that odor control system all on our own over the past couple of years for savings to the town of approximately $90,000. We did it between the highway department and the water pollution control department. We didn't involve any, any outside contractors. We didn't have to go out to bid. We didn't involve any engineers. So we saved quite a bit of money and rebuilt that system from the ground up. So it's all brand-new. This here is leading up to that building. The tanks on the left are going to be chemical mixing tanks. The facility uses a few different chemicals to remove phosphorus because phosphorus is soluble in water, sort of like sugar. And so what we need to do is we need to go in there, we need to take that phosphorus and turn it into a solid. And that's the only way that we can remove it from the water. So we use chemicals to achieve that. And then we're going to use another piece of equipment to eventually remove it completely. This is the inside of the building. What you're looking at there are called disc filters. That is what actually removes all the solids. Once we've turned all the phosphorus into solids, we're going to send it through these units here, and that's going to remove all the solids. Inside of the unit, there are a series of discs. Water flows through the center of those discs and then out towards the outside, capturing all the phosphorus on the inside. Go ahead, Matt. And periodically, we'll spray those, those discs to knock all the phosphorus off and send it off for further treatment. Normally, those run with the, with the covers closed, but we opened it up just for, for display purposes. Another part of the upgrade, go ahead, Matt, is our UV treatment system. Under new regulations, UV systems have to beat the 100-year flood plus three feet. And it's that plus three feet that is really huge. It's almost as much as the 100-foot, if not more. Our system was located outdoors, just in front of those round circular tanks. And it had flooded out in the past during Hurricane Irene, I think was, was one. And there was an October storm where the river rose quite a bit and caused some flooding. So as part of this project, we took that unit and we put it inside, same building as the disc filters. So now our UV system is, is probably about 10, 10 to 15 feet above ground. Certainly not going to be a problem. Whenever there is a storm or whenever there is a problem with a treatment plant, the first thing that you put back online before anything else is disinfection. That's our first and first charge. We have to start disinfecting the water even before we treat the water. This happens first. So that's the most critical piece of equipment we have. These here, you'll see four, five hatches on the bottom. Underneath that is a million-gallon holding tank. On the background, you'll see some of the clear polyethylene tanks. Those are our chemical tanks for the different chemicals that we use. We use something called PAC. We're going to use polymer, and we're going to use magnesium hydroxide. None of them are extremely toxic, which is good. Magnesium hydroxide is basically milk and magnesium. It's, it's not going to hurt anybody. It can be messy, but it's not going to hurt anyone. The piping you see sends the water over to those disc filters. That there would be the magnesium hydroxide system that was built as part of the project. This shows just some of the electrical components. Unlike most facilities or maybe, I don't want to say, buildings in the department, everything that we run, we run on 480 volts as opposed to 120 and 240. So we have 480 volts coming in. We will step that voltage down for equipment that runs off lower equipment, but most of our equipment runs off high voltage. Again, this here is a control panel that basically runs the, the treatment plant. And it looks good. It looks like it's got a bunch of switches and lights, but we wanted to show you the inside of it. So that when you have like a short in a wire and you're tracing an electrical issue, this is what we're faced with. And the staff over there does a great job at dealing with it. So we did some upgrades in that also as part of the upgrade. That's showing a backup generator. The new building has a backup generator that will run it 24 hours a day. It'll run the entire building, as the main treatment plant has a separate generator to do the same thing. And that's what your treatment plant looks like now. So you can see in the background, you'll see the new building is in now. You don't see the river anymore because the leaves came out, but it came out really nice. I know I'm proud of it. I think the town should be proud of it. It has been working very successfully since we started it up, and we'll talk a little bit about that on the next slide. So Robert had mentioned the referendum vote. The referendum was for $15,761. And do you have. And do you have this in your pockets? I think you do. No? Yeah. So when we went out to bid, the construction cost came in $11,438,912. Forgive me if I'm wrong because I can't see it that well. On top of that, we had engineering costs of just over $3 million. I think it was $3,800,000. We had a 5% contingency for unknown items or improvements that we could make along the way. We ended up using only 49% of that contingency. So we spent $274,112 out of $558,000 on improvements. Some of them were improvements that we as operators knew would be better than what was actually designed. Some were issues that came up in the field that needed to be addressed, but certainly none of them were frivolous, and that's why we spent less than half of that contingency. So there's going to be some short-term borrowing costs when we finally put this stuff to bond. There's going to be bonding council and some other costs. So overall, the project came in $895,088 under budget. I'm pretty happy about that. The proposed completion date was to be August 1st of this year. However, we got it up and running and completed by March 26th, I believe. And that was sort of important to us because our permit says we need to start removing phosphorus April 1st. So the August date was good, but we would be violating our permit between April and August, and we really didn't want to do that. So we pushed this project along so that we would be up and running in time for the phosphorus removal, which is April through October. So we ended up being four months ahead of schedule, and we've had a lot of success in removing phosphorus since then. So I want to thank you guys for listening. Anyone that ever wants to come for a tour is welcome to come for a tour. You get to see it up close and personal, and if you want, you can ask Deb about it, and she probably remembers. I know you won't come again, but that's okay. I understand completely. But yes, if anyone ever wants to get a tour, just let me know, and we'll be glad to do it.
I'd like to see the new finished. I was through there many years ago before, probably even before the last project was so. It's a while ago. It's a very interesting place, and this is, you know, like amazing what happened down there to get us in. We had to get into compliance for certain of these requirements, and so I'd like to see it again. I'm sure it's different than what I remember, but I'll try to make up a date and time and...
Sounds good to me.
I'd be happy to do that. Yeah. Great.
Okay. Well, thank you very much.
Well, thanks for being a good steward of all this. You know, this is a long-term investment, and I know that it took a lot of your time and thought, and we do appreciate that. It came in early, under budget.
It's what I like to do.
That's a big help. Yeah, well, we like to see that too. So thank you, Joe, for your...
And one last thing, I wanted to let you know that recently, we have Josh Law sitting in the back. Josh has been with the town for quite a few years. Josh initially started as a part-time laborer when he was in school, and he worked his way for many years throughout the department, became licensed, became a full-time licensed operator, and really took a lead in this upgrade. He learned a whole lot about this upgrade. He has a better understanding of all the components that are there and how they work, and was recently promoted to foreman. So I'm really proud of him, and I think it's great that he's able to come, and he's a definite asset to the Town of Plainville.
Absolutely. Congratulations to you. Thanks for all your hard work. Great. Does anybody have any comments or questions for Joe about the project? Thank you.
Thank you.
We appreciate you coming tonight. Thank you.
Next item I have is the Town Line Road reconstruction. The town was recently authorized by the State Department of Transportation to move forward with the reconstruction of Town Line Road. The proposed improvements include full-depth roadway reconstruction, minor roadway widening to achieve a uniform roadway width, minor drainage system improvements, installation of bituminous concrete curving, guide rail, solar radar speed signs, pavement marking, and signage. Reconstruction does not include the bridge located near Redstone Street. This will be done as part of the Farmington Canal Heritage Trail Phase 1 project. The estimated cost for the project is $1,322,400, which includes a 10% contingency. Funding for this project is provided under the Local Transportation Capital Improvement Program, otherwise known as LOT-SIP. This project has a 100% state participation ratio up to the total estimated project cost. On August 12th, seven bids for this work were received. The bids ranged in price from $869,000 to almost $1.3 million. The low bid was submitted by Tobacco &amp; Sons Builders, Inc. of Bristol in the amount of Tobacco &amp; Sons has performed similar work for Plainville in the past and has demonstrated that they can confidently perform such work as outlined in the contract. Town staff is recommending that the town council award the Town Line Road reconstruction bid to Tobacco &amp; Sons Builders, Inc. of Bristol in the amount of $869,500. There is an item under new business regarding this recommendation. John Bossy, Town Engineer, Director of Technical Services, has spearheaded this project. He is here and certainly can answer any technical questions with regards to the project. If this is awarded this evening, it's anticipated that construction would begin in September and hopefully be mostly done by the time winter rolls around, so.
Does anybody have any questions for John with the project or with Robert regarding this? Good? Okay. Thanks, John.
Next item we have, which is also under John's purview, is the hot crack sealing. Sounds pretty exciting. The town staff is making plans to perform the annual crack sealing of the streets. Crack sealing the streets extends the service life of the road, and staff is recommending utilizing CROG's solicitation invitation for bids for asphalt pavement crack sealing. USeal of Bloomfield has been deemed by CROG as the lowest responsible bidder. USeal has successfully completed, again, similar work in Plainville. Town staff is recommending that USeal of Bloomfield, Connecticut be awarded the bid to perform crack sealing this fall at a price not to exceed $50,000. Monies will come from the Town Aid Road account. There is an item under new business regarding this recommendation, and if approved, the work on the crack sealing would begin in September as well.
Okay.
Next item we have is the utility pavement restoration. And this also was under John's area. On July 22nd, the town received three bid proposals for pavement restoration of utility work for both this year and an estimated amount for next year. The scope of the project involves permanent street pavement restorations for various utility excavations in accordance with the revised street opening ordinance adopted by the town council in June of 2020. The ordinance required that contractors that seek a street opening permit pay in advance a restoration fee to permanently repair the trench after completion. The town would then use these monies to hire a contractor to then repair the trenches in accordance with our specifications. The bid proposals range from $25,500 to $58,031. The low bid was submitted by Burns Construction of Stratford, Connecticut in the amount of $25,500. Burns Construction has completed similar work in Plainville in the recent past for EverSource Gas and has demonstrated that it can confidently perform such work as outlined in the contract. There is an item under new business to award the utility pavement restoration bid to Burns Construction of Stratford, Connecticut in the amount of $25,500. It is anticipated that the town will collect sufficient restoration monies to cover the bid amount. Next item I have is the Buildings and Grounds mower bid. The fiscal year '22 capital improvement budget included $68,000 to purchase a new four-wheel-drive mower for the Buildings and Grounds Department. Buildings and Grounds is recommending that the town purchase a Toro Groundmaster 4000-D mower at a cost of $74,887.45. The price comes from Sourcewell, which is a federal procurement program for local and state governments entities, which provides a 22% discount from the list price. While the recommendation exceeds the budgeted amount, there are monies left over from a recent truck purchase and an earlier mower purchase to cover the difference. There is an item under new business to authorize the purchase of the Toro Groundmaster 4000D mower from Turf Products of Enfield for $74,887.45. We use Toro mowers, large Toro mowers, and we like to stay with that company because they build a quality piece of equipment, and we can standardize the repair parts and the ability, you know, and the knowledge to repair them as well. Next item I have is financial investments discussion. Finance Director Rob Buden is recommending that the town council authorize him to utilize Pershing LLC Baker Group to invest town funds. His plan is to enter into a ladder agreement with Plainville to buy up to $250,000 in CDs from various banking institutions for various maturity dates to maximize investment income. All CDs are FDIC insured, which is why the town's finance staff would not exceed the $250,000 per institution. Town staff will receive monthly investment return or loss depending on market conditions. The maturity dates are typically three to five years in duration. This complies with the State of Connecticut Investment Statute and is the same scenario Plainville currently uses with RBC with library trust funds. If approved, Rob, but Buden would invest no more than $1 million in four separate accounts to increase investment returns. There is an item under new business regarding this recommendation. I spoke to Rob earlier today after, you know, getting some questions from council members, or at least council member, and he pointed out that these are funds that would, you know, not be utilized, you know, for ongoing operational expenses. He also indicated that if necessary, he could redeem those earlier than their maturity dates. So, you know, if necessary, but he doesn't anticipate that, you know, at the very least, we would keep, you know, much more than $1 million in reserve to begin with. So it would not impact us as far as any additional appropriations or other projects that we had to, you know, move forward with that were potentially off-budget. What they mean by, what he means by a ladder agreement is where he would schedule these maturities so that they would come due, you know, at different times of the year. So it wouldn't all come at one time, so that, you know, he would ladder them so that they would, you know, build up and come down at, you know, over a scheduled period of time. He feels that this, you know, the investment opportunities that are available today for town funds is bringing in next to nothing in interest, and that this is a vehicle that is available to towns under the statutes, which Connecticut statutes, which does not allow for us to invest in something where you'd lose principal, and that, you know, historically, they have, their results have been significantly better than what you would, than what's currently available.
So just before you go on, I had some questions this morning that I had asked Robert about this investment proposal by Rob, and I just had some additional things that I wanted Rob and Robert to look at for me in terms of, you know, putting this million dollars. And we have some other potential large expenditures coming up soon. So I asked Robert if we could postpone the vote on this particular item until September so that I can get some of that information. Rob wasn't available here tonight, but I have some questions, and he said that would not be a problem in terms of the timing of this. So when we get to that portion in our new business, I'm going to ask you to postpone that particular item. Okay? All right. Thank you, Robert.
And that information, if any other council members want to participate in that discussion, you're welcome to as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Next item I have is the Valley Water Land Purchase Update. As reported during the July 19th Town Council meeting, last November, the town entered into a non-binding letter of intent with Valley Water Systems, Inc. to purchase 47.91 acres of property located on Ledge Road near Crescent Lake. The purchase price is $300,000 and assumes that a state grant was not successful to pay for a share of the purchase price. What that means is if we did get a state grant, the purchase price would actually slightly go up to $325,000. State grant, if we received it, would probably range in the area of 40 to 50%, if not a little bit more of the purchase price. Should be noted that the town has secured a commitment from a third party to contribute one-half of the purchase price for this 47.91 acre parcel, which would limit Plainville's amount to no more than $150,000. The land would be used for open space purposes and owned solely by the Town of Plainville. There is an item in our new business to schedule a public hearing on an additional appropriation of $150,000 to purchase the Valley Water property near Crescent Lake for September 13th, 2021 at 7:00 PM in the municipal center, so before our next town council meeting. Next item I have is COVID-19 update. Last Thursday, the State Health Department reported that Plainville is now classified in the orange category for COVID-19 for new cases. This is one step below the red category. According to the latest figures, Plainville's positive cases stood at 10.6 per 100,000 population, which just qualifies for the orange category. Red category is when you get over 15 positive cases per 100,000 population. The region, which includes Southington and Middlefield as well, so far has had 35 cases. This is between the three towns since August 1st. That's as of last week, late last week. That was roughly what the region had in July, but far below what occurred last fall and winter when we were in the 300 to 800 range. Last August, the region had 15 total cases for the month. Connecticut's positivity rate has remained in the 3% or slightly below all week. Over half the country is over 10%. At this time, because Executive Order 13A still remains in place, masks must continue to be worn in school. As this continues to be a state mandate, boards of education cannot relax it or change it. The entire country is experiencing a surge in cases, but when looking at cases in the Northeast, which has some of the highest vaccination rates in the country, the COVID-19 cases are very much lower when compared nationally. This shows the effectiveness of the vaccine. The vaccine remains readily available at our local pharmacies, urgent care centers, and many physician offices. Many times pharmacies and urgent care centers can vaccinate someone on a walk-in basis and have appointments available throughout the day. Next item I have is copiers printers bid discussion. Matt Daskel will now give a presentation on a proposed plan to put together a comprehensive and coordinated townwide contract for all printers and copiers. There's also a recommendation under new business to authorize a 36-month lease with the Office Works of Plainville to provide new copiers and printers through a lease and maintenance support for the same period. So with your permission, I'd like to turn it over to Matt to give a presentation on the project to possibly answer any questions you may have for him.
Good evening. Through you, Town Manager Lee and Council Chairperson Plagici. So we started out a project now several months ago to look at a managed copier and lease program for the town. I'm going to try and coordinate left and right hand at the same time. We started with a goal to achieve savings and efficiency through a comprehensive and coordinated townwide contract for all printers and copiers. So this is large stand-up copy machines you see and desktop laser printers. Currently, we have seven contracts with four or five vendors. They all end at different times. They carry different rates, and they have different billing cycles. So we were looking to try and address some of those concerns. The proposed contract looks to a single vendor. It covers all maintenance and supplies, being the ink, the toner, any of those sorts of things. It's going to cover all copiers, all desktop printers. It's going to have a managed printing platform called Paper Cut, which I'll discuss a little bit later, and it's going to be unified reporting and quarterly billing. So no more, you know, receiving multiple bills across different accounts, different usage periods, and sort of that challenge. We did see a strong response to this. The bid that we put together was comprehensive, and vendors responded strongly. In all, we had seven firms respond with 25 proposals for different options. So it was a pretty comprehensive process. The Office Works is proposing, is the proposal before you this evening, and IT reports a prior previous working relationship, and this is that they're the current school vendor that's in place. They hold the current contract for NASBO, a regional education bid, which is what the school system takes part in, and they also hold state bids with DCF, DMV, and Labor. They're a local Plainville business, which not only supports the local economy, but one of the things that we found especially attractive was that their response time is expected to be much quicker. They indicated that if there was an issue, being in town, we wouldn't necessarily have to go through a traditional... to go through a traditional request cycle. They could just send a technician as they're coming back to home base. And also from a cost perspective, they're the lowest cost as well. So a good story all around. The device placement that we're proposing, it's waking up, is a number of copy machines here, and it's a little bit complicated. I apologize, but I tried to color code it a little bit so folks could kind of get a sense of what we're looking at. All of the machines that are highlighted in blue, there's six of them, are replacement machines. These are ones that we currently own. They're not under a lease agreement, but they are getting older, and we'll talk about that in a second. The items highlighted in red, these are the larger copy machines, high-volume machines. We tried to put in place a system where these were shared across the town. So if there are large jobs, anybody can send to these printers during those times. And then finally, you've got a purple shading. There's one or two laser printers that we're talking about replacing, so. So current issues, why are we talking about replacing this? The town owns a number of those copy machines that we just identified, but many of them are reaching the end of the life. Right now, for example, the fire department copy machine earlier this year actually died non-serviceable, non-reparable, and we've been operating on a temporary rental since that time. The town hall third floor copier has been having issues in increasing rate. I believe as recently as Friday, it had an issue, and before that, it randomly spit out parts about two months ago. So we're starting to see more issues on these machines. WPC and recreation, these machines are also getting substantially old and not functioning. So the opportunity that we have here, and by going to a consolidation, is we can look across the town system and identify a plan for everywhere. We can look at the library. We reduced six machines. This was a number of copy machines in different locations, laser printers. We tried to essentially look at rightsizing what we need. So instead of what was previously being done where we identified machines as we went, we took all of them wholesale and said if we were to design the system, what would be the best way to do that with the most savings? Recreation, we got rid of, you know, a tabletop copier and a fax machine. We put them in the one device. There's stories like this throughout those pictures. It's waking up. The proposed contract is three years. It's what's called a fair market buyout, so the town would retain the option if any of these machines were ones that we felt were in good enough condition or had a serviceable life left. We could buy them out. The expiration was timed to coincide with schools, so going forward, we could do a collaborative bid with the schools, which would get us a greater volume because there's more machines across more, you know, more of the locations. And then the proposal is at $1,750.05 per month for all of these machines. There would then be the per-page cost, which I'll go over. So copiers, the story here is .00374 cents per page. This is dramatically lower. We'll talk in a minute about what we're paying now, but this will be for all of the copy machines. You can see the color price is .0374, and then, you know, there's some differences. When you get into printers, they would be billed at .0076 cents per page, or the color as you see there. Just as a reference point, the average bids by comparison to the Office Works proposal had black and white on a copier at .0047 cents. So this bid was fairly aggressive and found quite a bit of savings. So managed printing, we talked about this a little bit ago. This is the other area where we expect to see some savings. We're proposing to utilize a software called Paper Cut. The school systems currently utilize it, and it has, all users have a login, typically a simple four-digit code, or you can use a swipe ID, and you can print to any copy machine or any printer. What this allows is two things. One, if you need to print a large job and you want to use one of those shared machines, you can just walk up to it, you enter your code, you pick the job, it prints out. So we don't need to buy as many large machines because you can print anywhere. The other piece that it allows is if, for some reason, let's hope not, that a machine breaks down, or, you know, your pesky coworker decided to print 2,000 pages at once and you're impatient, you can go down a floor, pick a machine, and it'll print. We can also customize the user experience. So when you log in, it'll say, you know, "Welcome, Bob." It'll give you your top three priorities, you know, it'll give you some of that. So that's an upside. And then we also have an IT management component, and this is where IT worked with us to identify some concerns that we would have and places to look. So we can control print volume, we can control color. Right now, if on a color machine you print an email address, it counts that entire page and actually that entire document as color. We can on the backend set it so that hyperlinks and stuff don't default to blue. Gets you back to a black and white page that's, you know, a tenth of the cost. So we've got a lot of opportunity there. You know, we won't even, you know, we'll be phasing that in and seeing where there's other opportunities, but we think it'll open up, you know, a lot for the future. So this all is very interesting. I could talk to you, you know, all Friday night about this as coffee table conversation, but what does this actually mean in comparison? The second floor, currently, we have two machines, one in the town clerk's office and one in the mailroom. We're currently paying .0045 cents per page, so we're going to be seeing 22% savings on the per-page cost on that, on those two machines. WPC, this is an even more dramatic example. They currently have a minimum contract with 24,000 pages of usage. It's billed at .02589 cents per page, again, .0037. You know, we're expecting $550 savings on a $600 current contract. So we're starting to see some savings there. Some other examples, I picked two of the larger contracts that we currently maintain. So here on the third floor, the machine that you see out in the hallway there is our largest shared color machine. We did away with color in most locations. So that machine has an annual usage of black and white of 75,000 pages, a color usage of 58,000 pages. We're expecting to shift some, again, through that Paper Cut program to see less color and more black and white is what we're hoping to see. But if you kept those numbers consistent, the current contract is .008 cents, and that's because it's such an old machine. It's seven years plus old. Right now, what we're expecting is if we just took those average monthly volumes, we'd be seeing an annual savings on that one machine of $2,790 in per-page cost. There will be the machine replacement lease cost, but those will help offset. On the printer contract, right now, we maintain a printer contract across the entire town. This is all those laser printers that we have, 198,000 annual pages, 9,600 color pages. If that sounds like a lot, I just wanted to highlight about half of those pages are over at the police department, and it's a lot of locations that can't have larger copy machines or have state mandated requirements on printing. So in dispatch, for example, they have to have a printer there. It has to print certain reports whenever they run a certain process. So we're seeing some pages that we just can't, we can't control the volume, but we can control the cost. And so per page right now, it's a complicated contract as it stands with minimum usages, complicated billing, but on average, the per-page cost is .15 cents, so basically a penny a page, and we'd be going to seven tenths of a cent per page. On that contract, we're expecting, you know, $2,000 per year in annual savings on a straight per-page cost. When you factor in some of the other dynamics, we expect it to be much higher than that. But again, it's a much more complicated picture on that contract. So again, the final part that I would just highlight is where we started and where we think we've gotten to, which is, you know, a savings and efficiency through a managed contract that's covering all of the town and that we can really get a handle on. Under new business, there is a motion to award the bid 2021-22 to Office Works of Plainville, Connecticut in the amount of $1,750.05. If approved, we expect this contract would go into effect sometime in September, we're hoping, and I'm more than happy to answer any questions.
Just a quick question. I'm sure this is included, but for that amount, the 1,750 per month, that includes all supplies, toners, all of that and?
Correct.
All part of that?
Correct. Everything but paper.
Oh.
So any of, you know, the fuser assemblies or, you know, the disposal cartridges, whatever all of that sort of servicing kits, those are all included.
And if there's any issue with it and they have to, a tech has to come, it's all part of?
It's all included, and we did include requirements on the turnaround times and the service times. We're not expecting a concern there, but we did want to include that because we have currently seen sometimes where service windows extend.
Great. Thank you.
Not a problem.
Good. Any questions about the copier project for Matt? Okay. Thank you.
Next item I have is the Robertson Airport renovations discussion, and Matt Dasko, once again, with your permission, will give the Town Council an update on the improvements being made at Robertson Airport. At their last meeting, the Aviation Commission passed a motion to recommend sharing in the cost of renovating the administration building. Matt will review the proposed changes and the shared costs. Part of the improvements include replacing the windows in the building. There is an item in our new business to authorize the purchase of the replacement windows from the Window Shop, Inc. of Plainville in the amount of $35,871.15. With your permission, I'd like to turn it over to Matt and to go over that, you know, that information as well.
Good evening again through you, Town Manager Lee and Councilperson Plegesi. We're going to outline very briefly some work at Robertson Airport and some renovations that are proposed. Wanted to take just a moment as we started to go over Robertson Airport. For those who aren't familiar, it was first in flight. The town acquired it approximately 10 years ago, and we've been ever since making improvements to the airport. So in most recent memory, the council may be familiar with the 2020 projects where we did a taxiway rehabilitation. We did building painting, so that's where you'll see most of the buildings now sporting a new coat of paint. 2021 saw recently approved, I believe it was back in June, the replacement of the roof on Hangar Four, and that set up us in a position to now come forward with, you know, further renovations to the administration building now that we're not seeing water in the building. So this was just as a recap, this is the roof replacement project. You'll see on the lower left, you can see the condition of the old roof panels, just so that, you know, tying back a little bit, you can see kind of the condition on why we were replacing the roof, and this is a public area we'll talk about in a little bit as well. So the administration building renovations, this is a public-private partnership with Airport Operator Interstate Aviation, and they're looking at a complete renovation of the administration building, and this includes ADA upgrades, public access viewing areas and a patio, a pocket park that we'll go over in a moment, windows, doors, a small café, and classroom space for flight school. The project totaled cost is expected to be $250,000. The town would be responsible for exterior portions of these renovations at $125,000, and Interstate Aviation would cover the interior portions. So this is the proposal. I'll walk through each of the areas and try and highlight a little bit of what we're looking at for those who aren't familiar. This is the administration building. The lower wing there is the administration building proper, and then it extends into Hangar Four at the top across there. So we're looking at the first area here in the gray shaded block. Approximately in the middle is a new reception and entranceway. There would be a small café here. This would be for mostly to-go food or sort of that quick speed oven type food. It wouldn't be a full kitchen, but it would offer, you know, some attraction. And what we're hearing is that in the aviation community, there's a trend and an interest in going to different locations just to grab lunch, grab a quick bite, and then you go somewhere else and maybe explore the community while you're there. Here's three classroom spaces that would be available for flight school. Interstate Aviation has reported an increase in flight training and flight school and has been trying to expand their operations, so this will give them proper classrooms to do that. They currently only have one conference room. And then the big portion, and this is where we come, you know, where the town's share comes in, is new main entrances here, including ADA access with the handicap ramp, improvements to parking, sidewalk. I'll show you the current conditions here. This is the current entrance. It's a little difficult to identify even where the main door is, so we're going to be looking to improve that. And here's what the proposed look would be, you know, a new main vestibule for energy efficiency and also a defined entranceway. When you get up to the airport, for those who have been up there, there's a real challenge in even identifying which building is what. And here's a little bit further picture of it. And then the big piece here, here is an open public space. A lot of times, folks go up to enjoy the airport, and they really don't have a place to do that other than outside their car or sort of outside the fencing. So here, we wanted to offer some patio space, again, tying into the café or someone coming to have a brief bite to eat, some grass and some lawn space. It really opens up a lot of opportunity for the public to engage with the airport. Maybe they decide to go for a scenic flight, or they decide to take a lesson or engage in the community in another way. So we thought that was important. This also can be an event space in the future, so if you wanted to host events or, you know, do a car cruise night or something like that, you've now got a place to base out of. So the work that we're proposing is going to be coordinated through Public Works doing much of the labor. We're going to try and self-perform as much as we can, and so we're trying to break out the components, so if there is any need to contract, you know, we do it as individual components. And tonight's focus is on doors and windows. We just don't have that capability. It's a specialty product. We did get three comparative quotes. The low price is recommended. It is a local vendor, and this evening, we're asking for a bid waiver as a result of delays that we expect from the COVID-19 pandemic. Windows are currently on a minimum eight-week order lead time. We don't expect a bid process. We'll find further savings, and we do expect that it will delay the process so that we may not be able to complete work before winter. So there is an item under new business to award the windows and doors to the Window Shop, pardon me, in an amount of $35,871.15. If approved this evening, we expect work to likely be completed in September or October, and I'm more than willing to answer any questions.
When we talk, just to add a little bit to that, as far as the installation of the windows, who's going to do that?
So we would, the openings would be provided to Window Shop, and they would do the installation.
But the windows would be provided using, is that where Interstate Aviation was going to assist in that area?
Correct. So for the windows, Interstate will prepare openings for us to actually install the windows into, so there isn't, other than that front vestibule, all of the openings would be available and ready when the vendor was there, and we wouldn't have that cost.
Nice you're using a local provider as well, the Window Shop. Good to see.
Madam Chair?
Go ahead.
Just a quick question. So this is a long project, and it's just the windows and doors that are being done in September, and when is the completion of this area here? I mean, the grassy area and all this, all this work?
We're actually hoping to have the entire project completed this fall. The largest challenge that we're having currently is identifying a concrete vendor to complete the main entrance that's needed for the vestibule.
Okay.
The combination of that rear patio and the front entrance stairs are presenting some challenges in identifying a single vendor who is available and can do that at a reasonable cost.
Yeah.
So as soon as we are able to identify that vendor, which we're actively working on now, we'll be ready to go with the other components. We have quotes, and they're all low quotes for the other miscellaneous pieces like railings.
The café and all that stuff, too.
That would be Interstate Aviation. Their indication is they're looking to move forward pretty expeditiously.
Okay. Awesome. Thank you.
Not a problem.
Great.
If there's no more questions, Matt can follow with this happening.
I'll keep happening short this evening. I only received one, and that was a reminder from revenue collection and tax, specifically delinquent notices for motor vehicle and tax that were due July 1 with 30 days to pay. Those delinquent notices have gone out, so if folks haven't paid, now is your friendly reminder that accounts are past due.
Okay, great. All right. Thank you both for your report. Any further questions or comments regarding Robert or Matt's report for us this evening? Okay. Good job. Thank you so much. All right. Moving on, we are now in our item number nine, public comment section of the meeting. During this time, we welcome During this time, we welcome the public to come to, I guess, that podium. We will give you three minutes, please state your name and address if you'd like to speak to the council. So does anybody wish to speak to the council tonight? Mr. Kelby.
Good evening, council members, town staff, fellow members of the public. Chief Matthew Catania, as you all know, is highly respected leader and an excellent police officer. Chief Catania and the Catania family turned Plainville's past reputation of a flawed and embrailed police department around and bolsters its reputation extremely positive, not only for our police department, but also for the town of Plainville. Now highly regarded from both the public and the police and community from around our state, with that open transparency, highly respected, and being one of the highest of integrity and trust, I hereby request that the town of Plainville recognize Chief Catania's service and dedication to our community and rename Neal Court Roadway to Matthew Catania Drive as Chief Catania always knew the right, just, and proper way of conducting business, and was the driving force behind protecting and serving our community with the highest integrity. With that being said, I'm highly concerned and displeased with the town's selection process for our next chief of police. Chief Catania would be displeased and saddened with the process as well. That really is an understatement. As some of you are aware, in certain communities around the country, people actually elect the head of their police department. Elected officials or town staff does not select the head of whose job is solely to protect and serve its people. Here are some questions that we, the people, the citizens of Plainville, have for our town staff and elected officials. As typical, I doubt that any of you will respond this evening to any of these questions. What determines a candidate qualified for police chief? What determines a candidate highly qualified? What determines a candidate not being qualified? Why was a local investigation company chosen for the background check of those candidates qualified and moved into the final selection and interview process? Anyone can Google, search a person's name, and see what appears. But who is actually called and spoken to the candidates, or those actually selected for an interview? Who's actually stopped into a previous employer and questioned the chief of police or humans and resource director for that community? The process is flawed and skewed. I stand before you this evening to inform you all that I professionally know several of the candidates who have applied for the position of chief police in our town, as I've been in law enforcement for over fifteen years. I'm proud to inform you all that the highly qualified candidate, as chosen by the Connecticut Police Chiefs Association, was and still is Captain Mark Catania of the Glastonbury Police Department. Captain Catania holds every accolade and award to the town of Glastonbury, which offers for its police department and its employees. Captain Catania has all the qualities of a great chief, a highly qualified candidate. As deemed by our Police Chief Association of Connecticut, he's open and transparent, of good moral and ethical background and standing, one who listens effectively, but also who respects the person speaking. A highly educated officer, and one who has done nothing negative, which is in his employment file or background. Fellow colleagues of his endorse him, and residents of the state write praise about him and his job of handling things, which is stacked very high in his employment file. Who better of a person to be the next chief of police for the town of Plainville? Who heard nothing but Plainville discussions about the community, its highs and its lows, its family functions at the Catania household, or even daily from Chief Matthew Catania, who needed to contact him to bounce things off for future reference, or needing daily support? Captain Mark Catania would truly have continued the legacy of Matthew Catania, adding his way of building the Plainville Police Department into the future.
Thank you, does anybody else wish to speak to the council that has not done so? Yep.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, in the town of Plainville. My name is Officer Timothy Miller. I have been a patrol officer with the town of Plainville since two thousand and three. The reason I am here before you tonight is to show support for Lieutenant Peterson, and to share my most recent personal experiences with him. For the last year and a half, I have been out injured. During that time, Chief Catania, God rest his soul, and Lieutenant Peterson have been very supportive and caring in that they would check up on me from time to time. Since the chief's passing, Lieutenant Peterson has picked up the mantle, and without missing a beat, has continued to check on me and my family. For example, Lieutenant Peterson has gone to the town on my behalf to get help for me financially, because I simply asked him to. He has collected my mail because he thought it might be of importance to me, and personally delivered it to my house, because this is the kind of person he is. In closing, I would like to add that as a former leader in the United States Army for twenty years, I think I'm qualified in saying that Lieutenant Peterson is an outstanding leader who cares not only about the men and women of the police department, but also the people who live and work in the town of Plainville. I can think of no better person, better suited for the job of Plainville Police Chief. Thank you for letting me speak, good night, and God bless.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak that has done, has not done so? Anybody else? Joanne.
Joanne Edmund, one sixty-six West Main Street. I concur with that young gentleman. Go in-house, there's no need to do anything else but that. I, the first thing I'm going to talk about tonight, how many which ways can you talk about the trail? And I've talked so many times about it, I still am highly opposed to the trail as it stands, as it is proposed, as alignment C. I still think it's too expensive for the people of town, and as a budget line item, and I think it's, it's also going to be dangerous. And I think that this town used to be just a sweet little town, and we're slowly, or maybe fast becoming, life in the big city. And talking about city, we're going to be fast-moving towards Truck City with, over there on Northwest Drive, I mean, the trucks are going to be coming in from all over, from all points, to the big skyscraper, holy moly, that thing is right up to the sky. Anyhow, then you got the Trail Depot over there on Northwest Drive, and all I can visualize is you're going to be serving up hiker pancakes, hot off the griddle, as they try to cross that Northwest Drive. Holy smokes, it's, it's not, not a good sight. And the trail is just too invasive and intrusive. You don't want lining up people's backyards and front yards. It's bad enough it's going to go into the park, and it's going to be on Broad Street. People are going to lose their curbside parking, stupid, absolutely stupid. To finish up, I think we should all think about what's going on right now on the national scene. I think, when I say, "Plainville, wake up." "Connecticut, wake up." And please, America, wake up. I hope we vote the bums out that are just calling every bad judgment, making every bad judgment call in the world. Oh, I feel so sorry for the Afghans. I know they didn't put up much of a fight, but maybe, I don't know, how do you know what the whole story is? But what an awful sight, those people clinging on to the plane, the big American plane as it's trying to leave the airport, it's just, I couldn't even get here tonight hardly, because I'm just glued to what's going on. It's just so horrendous, between the border situation and the COVID, mask, mask, masks, and yet, we've got to wear masks, and yet they come across the border without masks, and spreading their disease all over the United States, it's just awful. They're coming with every kind of disease possible, it's craziness, it's absolute craziness. Vote the bums out. Next election, please. And it behooves everybody, talking about the national scene really affects you locally, too. How about your pocketbooks? You see, it costs more to live now, inflation is here, it wasn't when Trump was at the helm. He was wonderful.
Thanks, Joanne. Does anybody else wish to speak that has not done so? Mr. Frangos.
Thank you. Lou Frangos, ten Fairbanks Street. I'll be quick, I wanted to mention that I'm sorry I missed the marijuana legislation work session. It's my fault, I thought it was a closed-door session, and I walked in, the thing was already in progress. With that said, the only question I do have, if I understand correctly, this will be brought up at the next town council meeting? Okay, so that's I thought was said, but one of the questions I did have is, will it, was it, or will it be discussed about the selling of marijuana in stores in Plainville?
In stores, there's, there's a lot to this legislation about that. I'm going to let the town manager give you some details about what we learned tonight and where we're going.
In Plainville, under the statute, there's only, would be allowed one, what they call dispensary, so it would not be sold, it would be sold in a store specifically for marijuana selling, it wouldn't be, you know, in a grocery.
It's like the VAP stores, or whatever they call that thing?
Yes.
Okay, because I thought I saw something in the news about some towns will not allow it at all.
Right.
And that was when it was going to fall into that category.
There's been discussion at the council level with regards to that, a decision has not been made, or a recommendation has not been made at this point in time. There are limited locations based on current zoning regulations that are in place for medical marijuana. There are medical marijuana zoning regulations in Plainville currently, which would limit where it could be sold in town. Most of it is located on, you know, on Crooked Street, New Britain Avenue, end of town. Although there is, in the CVS Plaza at the corner, would be, would be also allowable under current zoning regulations.
Thank you.
So those are really the only two spots, Walgreens across the street as well, but you wouldn't be seeing medical marijuana, or any marijuana, being sold at a pharmacy, so.
Okay, thank you. And the other, if I could end on a lighter note, being the age I am, I just couldn't help when we had the presentation for the fire department, and this front row had all the Plainville Police Officers, and God, I saw so many young faces, I didn't know it was, I didn't know it was the Plainville Police Department or the Safety Patrol. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak tonight that has not done so? Anybody else? Last chance, okay. Thank you for your comments, I will close the public comment section and move along. We do not have any old business, so we have a number of new business items to take care of tonight. Item number one, please.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Motion to award bid twenty twenty dash oh H E Town Line Road Reconstruction to Tobacco and Sons Builders, Inc., Bristol, Connecticut, in the amount of eight-hundred-and-sixty-nine thousand five hundred dollars.
Second motion, Madam Chair.
Thank you, motion and second, any discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, number two.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Motion to award bid twenty twenty-two dash oh five E Hot Crack Ceiling under the Capital Region Council of Governments Bid seven oh eight to UCL Bloomfield, Connecticut, for an amount not to exceed fifty thousand dollars.
Second motion, Madam Chair.
Thank you, I have a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thanks, motion passes, item number three.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Motion to award bid twenty twenty-two dash oh two Utility Pavement Restoration to Burns Construction Stratford, Connecticut, in the amount of twenty-five thousand five hundred dollars.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, motion passes, item number four, please.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Motion to waive bid process and award bid twenty twenty-two dash oh four Buildings and Grounds Mower to Turf Products Enfield, Connecticut, in the amount of seventy-four thousand eight hundred and eighty-seven dollars and forty-five cents.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, motion passes, item number five.
Madam Chair.
Getting there.
Motion to award RFP number twenty twenty-one dash twenty-two Copies Printers to Office Works Plainville, Connecticut, for a monthly amount of seventeen fifty and fifty cents, plus per-page costs.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, motion passes, number six.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Motion to waive the bid process and award bid number twenty twenty-two dash oh six Robertson Airport Windows to the Window Shop, Inc., Plainville, Connecticut, in the amount of thirty-five thousand eight hundred and seventy-one dollars and fifteen cents.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Madam Chair, I'm skipping number seven because we decided to postpone that, so.
So could we just, do we need to do a motion to postpone?
No.
Not necessarily, okay, so just for the sake of, just for the sake of those.
Skipping number seven.
We're postponing item number seven to our next meeting.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Motion to establish a public hearing on Monday, September thirteenth, twenty twenty-one, at seven o'clock in the municipal center to hear public comment regarding an appropriation for the purchase of valley water land.
Second. Thank you, motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, item number nine.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Motion to approve the tax refunds is listed on the addendum.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. So that takes care of our new business. Robert, do we have any other items of interest that you would like to speak about tonight?
Just one item, you may recall that back in June, the state of Connecticut passed a mandate that required all municipalities to develop an affordable housing plan for their community, and the town council authorized us to, the town staff, to apply for a grant for fifteen thousand dollars to get technical assistance for putting one together. And I was notified late this afternoon that we are going to receive the grant of fifty thousand dollars for the Affordable Housing Plan Technical Assistance Grant to the town of Plainville, so.
Very good, great.
I just want to let you know that.
Thank you for that.
Work will probably happen in the fall with regards to that, but that will help us meet our requirement under the mandate.
Great, thank you, anything else?
No, I do not have anything else.
All right, anybody have anything else they'd like to add? All right, may I have a motion to go into executive session, please?
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Motion to move into executive session for land acquisition discussion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, motion passes.